Make the motion to appoint Judy Askey as Health Officer.
I'll second it.
Motion by Dave, second by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Next is from Thomas Starry. With regret, I am resigning from the CAC for health reasons. It's been an honor to serve and be a part of the projects. Thank you. With warmest regards to all. The manager?
Borough manager before. Thank you. Well, I guess first of all, I'd just like to mention that since the last meeting was sufficient time, we've advertised a bunch of the tax work. So, there may be a bit of public inspection actually which is out of the budget. So, they are ready to adopt. I know it appears later on in the agenda, I just don't really know with that now. And it revised the budget summary that all of us received, taking into account the tax rate that was approved last year. Then also on the agenda, I have one more CDVG resolution that I would like council to consider, should be attached to the agenda. This became necessary after the last meeting when council approved the agreements. We have the county minister for 2014 on the occasion. So, we still knew that agreement was approved, but this resolution didn't move forward coming. The county is asking, essentially the resolution is in the county permission to submit the application for us. So, I urge you to consider it.
I want to make a motion that we use out. Have the county submit our application for a CDVG plan.
Motion by Thomas, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, will the roll call vote?
Kara?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Lasky?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Stortle?
Yes.
Gersky?
Yes.
Can I make sure that folks at the county get that, along with your agreement? The next item I wanted to bring your attention is our schedule of regular meetings for 2015. Georgia from Ketterick, a what we call blanket advertisement announcing all the meeting dates for coming here. We do have to publish our meeting dates. I believe that these dates brought up to the very first meeting that occurs. Someone referred that to me, mentioned, and said there was a correction or changes and so forth. I believe Georgia contacted the chair of persons of all the committees.
Right, most of this is the same from prior years.
Previous.
When we added the Chris, the Barbie ones.
Right.
That was an addition.
So, we have that. And I also sent along to council a list of borough officials and also all the people that serve on various committees, authorities, commissions, et cetera. And I don't know how well it reproduced, but I highlighted vacancies, and there are several vacancies, many of which occurred due to the timely passing of some of the people. Just to note once again, there is a vacancy of Board of Health now on CAC as well, Citizens' Advisory Committee. Hark, there's a vacancy in Hark, a vacancy in the Financing Commission, our Board of Appeals. I believe the rest are just, the others that are highlighted are just reappointments. People whose terms are coming through. Many of those were addressed, the exception of Herb Hurby, his term of Service Commission is set to expire. The members on the two pension committees. Oh, and also John Lambert on the ESRC, his term is due to expire again this year.
If anybody knows if anyone is interested in serving the borough on any of the boards of the commission, if you could just let us know, send a letter of interest. As you can see by the list of boards and commissions and committees that we have, it takes a lot of people to run the borough, and there are a lot of good people put in time. We get all the media attention here at the Borough Council meeting, but there's a lot of boards and commissions that do a lot of work at their monthly meetings and help us do a good job here. And we really do rely on good people stepping up and being willing to serve on those committees.
The next item I have is our probationary employees. We do have one individual whose probation period starts today. In fact, that would be Richard Miller, Combs Street Department. I'm sure he got your attention.
Did he take his CDL test again?
Oh, he had a CDL.
Oh, he had a, he's not?
No, the other individuals who didn't get a CDL yet, just do take this test tomorrow.
Make a motion to take that from the office. Motion by Brian, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? Very nothing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
Police chief's not here today. I saw an officer. That's okay. He's looking for you. Are you looking? He has something on his face, okay. Well, if there's any report we can serve, we can come back to that. Committee reports. Neighborhoods downtown the Shorter District.
Yes, I do have one. I make a motion to approve the recommendation made by Hark to approve sign placement lighting for the new house at 123 West Broadshire.
Motion by Justin, and a second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it. You're doing a very nice job down there on West Broadshire.
Where is the bus stop open?
Anything else, Justin? Any other committee reports?
Yeah, if I may. After Christine had requested if there were any motions for American Youth, I said no at the time, but it gave my attention that John Lambert's term as the at-large representative of the ESRC was set to expire at the end of the year. I spoke to John about it, who would be interested in serving, giving that position, so I made a motion to appoint John Lambert to another term on the ESRC, as the office president.
Motion by Dave, second by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments? Just a reminder, each municipality in the ESRC has two representatives. One is either a supervisor or a council person, maybe it's a non-
No, I think it's at large, we had a comment.
Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
If I can, also, if I can report that ESRC has extended an offer to John Mirarchi from Cardinal to serve as the executive director of ESRC. He had accepted, and we expect his first official duty to be breakfast with Santa on Saturday. It's not going to be Santa, but he will be there for the breakfast.
So, with the last name, Mr. Mirarchi.
That's a high.
Well, he's working according to the town cap, where council is actually shorting this meeting.
Well, we wish him luck, and he's certainly in an important position.
Yeah, I hope to possibly bring him here tonight for introduction, but then we're able to work that out with short notice, so we'll bring him today at some point as an introduction. Reportable at that time, working in to do a swell position.
Anything else? No. Any other committee reports? Mayor's report, the mayor did not feel the ten place meeting, so work reasons, did not send a report. Is there anybody from the floor that wishes to address council? Solicitors' report.
Everybody, Kevin gave it out. I have a resolution. What happened was the House Bill 1590 changed the Tax Collector Act, and now the tax collector is required to have a deputy tax collector. We do not appoint that individual, that is the appointment deputizing the deputy tax collector, but we have to approve it. She's recommended it, Pam or Talia has recommended it, or husband or girlfriend, they'll bond in the same way, and say you bond, but it's when and only when she becomes incapacitated, if she is fairly strict definition of incapacitation. They still have to be approved by the all taxing bodies, just the approval. That would be, you know, the school district and the county, but Pam said, you know, that would be individual issue like that, that guy. So, I haven't drawn up, but we get it by resolution only for the fact that you have to search through the minutes to find out who deputizes, or who we approve. It makes it difficult, I figure, just that as a resolution. So, if you want to talk about the resolution.
I want to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the deputy tax collector.
Motion by Dave, second by Brian. Anybody have any questions or comments?
What happens when she runs for reelection? Does he, he doesn't have to run with her?
No.
It just kind of carries over?
Yeah, you just-
Or as long as she-
The act isn't real clear. It looks like they just threw this together. They were mostly interested to get the continuing education and the background checks, those sorts of things, but they felt, I guess they had some problems with where you have Pam and she has a stroke in the hospital, who's going to do it? That's the situation that they run into. So, they're requiring a tax collector to do that, but they don't run together. After she gets elected again, she probably have to go through that act of deputizing, I would assume, because she started a new term.
So, she's not elected, would the new elected person then have to collect the things that have worked?
Correct. Correct. And there's no, it doesn't say anything about if you don't do it, what penalties there are, it doesn't say. It's not clear, because it says they shall, and it was effective immediately when they passed the House bill, because September. But until everybody figured out what was going on, DCD sent something around to everybody. I was concerned on whether, you know, who would appear to cost on the bond, but Pam already checked on that, she did her homework on it, so just go, yeah, put right on the bond, not a big issue.
And just for the clear, she deputizes, and then we just, we were not deputized.
That is correct. And I drew up a form for her, tried to help her out, I don't know if that was included in the look back, and yeah, I put that in there just to help her. So, she has something to write in, because it says it has to be done in writing, so I figured that was the simplest, easiest thought to produce for her.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Or the rest of all.
Kara?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Lasky?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Stortle?
Yes.
Gersky?
Yes.
And then your KRIZ authority was advertised the second time, post adoption of the ordinance. That was advertised, we're just waiting back for the public notices, but once the public notices are back, we can have that sent out to the Department of Public State. So, we have, that letter's already drawn up, it was part of our ordinance, so it's already going once we approve publication. I think within this week in the Law Journal, in fact, it's already added, so we should have the-
We'll need a copy of Department of State's certification that the authority committed that.
Right, so what we need, I talked to Kevin about this, we could get, once we get it signed, the minute I get those proof of publication, I'll have it over to the office. It might be lost inside, and maybe we could get it to Jerry Holt, who just hand carried it out and expedited, and quicker it gets done. But we can't get, I gave a little delay to swap, but to get it back is not a real sign. I don't know how long the proof of publication, I was worried about the Law Journal, if that moved or not, if somebody gets sick or something, when are you going to get that? We told him to rush on, he may have forgotten.
Anything else, Mike? Unfinished business. Making a motion to adopt a 2015 budget. The motion's on Brian, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments?
This is the revised-
This is the revised summary.
Okay. And has anything changed in it substantially from what was in the last meeting's package?
The deficit is in the general fund.
I only adjusted for the tax rate that we discussed in the last meeting.
Okay, so, so the deficit in item number one of the general fund is now 1749, I guess, versus previous year. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no.
No.
Making a motion to adopt 2015 tax ordinance fixing the real estate tax rate, 18.25 mil for general purposes. One mil for the building equipment, five and a half mil for the law badge gap. For the motion, Brian, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, will the roll call vote?
Kara?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Lasky?
No.
Mace?
Yes.
Stortle?
No.
Gersky?
Yes.
I put the last motion under unfinished business. We typically have a meeting on the third Tuesday in December, that would be December 16. Because we have this meeting today, I would just pay not a lot to do on that day, but one thing we do on a third Tuesday is to approve the building plan against the borough, which won't be prepared until that point. So, my recommendation is, and we still may have, we may have a meeting on that day if there's other items to vote on, but if we can, we can, if we can offer our Borough Manager Dave to send the bills on review of finance committee, which is part of our process anyway, and we could reapprove those again in January. That would give us the ability to cancel the meeting right before Christmas, because we don't need it for any other purpose. So, I don't know what council's thoughts are on that, but I wanted to bring that up and give everybody a little bit of a present of not having to be here on season.
Motion to adopt by Borough Manager Dave to send the bills on financial review approval from this.
Motion by Dave, second by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments? It's not a question, just, I would assume Amy would a lot of know when they're ready to go, and then maybe, let's say, the week before, or like normal timeframe.
Fifteen, fifteen.
Yeah. I mean, we do it anytime, because she's got the terrible ones to make it, but I would assume all bills will be together till around that same time frame anyway. Any other questions or comments?
So, will that be that all the bills for 2014, right? Does that close out the last time for the year?
It would be all the bills that we would approve for payments-
For December, I see.
Yeah, we still incur bills between now and between the sixteenth and the eighth of June.
Does the committee have to do something prior to the year?
No, we would just, we'll incur bills in December that we will not pay until January.
Okay.
So, we, we're on a, we're on a fiscal year that begins January 1st, but some of the bills are going to have to be received. If we receive a bill on December 31st, we don't pay it on December 31st, we would approve that at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it. Any other unfinished business?
If I may, I did have one thing that I can mention previously. We did receive a repository sale notice from the county. I believe everyone has their confirmation. This individual, Eric Nagler, is bidding on 63 and a half mils, which, that does sound familiar to all of us, as a number of co-violations. I gave this to our code officers, and they informed me today that Officer Nagler has no directed violations of the owner's farm property, which is possessed there on Liston Street. They tried to reach out to him to let him know what the issue was, but I think that Nagler contacted us. So, I'd just like to put that out there.
Motion by Dave, and the second by Justin, and the third by Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments? Just under the question, I would recommend that we send some information to him about our low interest loan programs, I could help put in and move on, using the way they work out there. Our low interest loan program would be a helpful tool for him to find some instruments that are necessary. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
We got two pieces here, this is the health plan summary, and I don't know if it's something that's taken elsewhere, then we've got the, some of the contract items, I just don't know what they mean, and I don't know if that needs to be taken, you know, not easy for someone.
I could try to address those, unless you want to. Kevin, a favor, try to address it. If you remember, at the end of last year, we approved a new collective bargaining agreement with the United Auto Workers. There's been some question about one of the reimbursements for steel toe shoes, it's on page 17 of what you have, the section is 20.2. It reads, and this is part of the collective bargaining agreement. The employees in the street department and water distribution department are required to wear steel toe shoes, which the employees are responsible for purchasing. Water distribution department employees assigned to reading water meters will not be required to wear safety shoes when performing these duties. The borough shall reimburse these employees up to $150 per calendar year in all departments for the purchase of these safety shoes. There were some employees who were misreading that to mean that they could purchase any type of shoes with that $150, but we clarified that it's only for safety shoes. There was some meaning reimbursement of sneakers and, I know sneakers, I almost said flip flops, but what, any type of sneaker, sneaker leather shoe. But it's just to clarify, just so council, council gets any questions, which it shouldn't, but if you do, refer to the Borough Manager, but it's pretty clear in the collective bargaining agreement that that additional $150 reimbursement for safety shoes, so, and not for other types of shoes.
So, it's, we don't have the recommended brand, but they can buy a brand of safety, and then they-
I talked to Sean Turner about that, it did be adopted, I signed written prescriptions of just as sports shoes, which I think the documents are pretty important to receive. But that document says safety shoes, which seems pretty clear.
Regardless, the final document-
And they're, the U.A., the auto worker union represented from Albany, he wrote this up, so I mean, I think it's pretty clear there. But we just wanted to, I asked Kevin because there was a question, distribute this to everybody. The other item that you have is the health plan option summary. If you remember, in the new collective bargaining agreement, the health plan change was a significant change in the new collective bargaining agreement with the United Auto Workers. The new health plan, they chose to put in the contract, if you recall, the United Auto Workers selected the insurance plan, and they selected the insurance broker, and they chose the Capital Blue Cross PPO 500, and so there are some changes in the new renewal period, and so there's going to be some changes. These are the, this is the summary of the plan. But when we renew that policy, the insurance policy starting February 1st, there's going to be some changes to the, to that plan. So, the last page lists the changes to the co-cadence and things like that, and so that's just kind of in advance for the council to have an understanding that the contract says that they were going to give the employees the Capital Blue Cross PPO 500, and that does have a change material.
So, we're going with the renewal on the Capital Blue Cross.
Correct. We'd have no choice.
That was my question. So, it did spell out specifically the plan and not be pointed at-
It didn't describe, it said the Capital Blue Cross PPO 500.
And again, this was, this was the plan that they chose, this was the plan that they presented to us.
May I read this correctly, there's no change in the cost this year?
Oh, I mean, part of 11%. I'm sorry. There's a 1% increase in premiums, but there are, there are some changes to the co-cadence.
Okay.
So, I'm sure we'll be having further discussion on this, but if you wanted to get this out in council, just to refresh everybody's memory, if you pull out your collective bargaining agreement, it spells it out pretty- So, those who, those who are really informational, there's no action necessary, but you might hear requests, people will ask, we want to make sure that you have that information.
I think that's what was negotiated.
Any other unfinished business? Anybody have any new business? As I'm looking at a new business of last, since the last council meeting, the PRIS Authority has held its first meeting and has set up meeting dates, lister, and terms of office and office vision. So, that's been done. The PRIS Authority will meet the third Monday of each month at 6:30. And the folks that are on the PRIS, including myself, they follow the following terms that are currently, it's easier if it's all at the same time. So, for this year, I'll serve as chairman, Rich Hadd, the vice chairman, Paul Federici, secretary and treasurer, Jack Culp, and Jeff Bo has been the solicitor for the PRIS Authority. About the PRIS, there were two applications submitted in the state Borough Council, the PRIS Authority submitted one, Granbury Township. So, if they select, we're giving them one of the three. So, I want to thank the Borough and the Authority and Mike for your help in putting together those recently. Yes, the applications had to be submitted by the end of November. It would be postmarked by the end of- Any other new business? We need an executive session. We need an executive session. Second. Motion by Dave, second by Tom.
Brian.
Brian?
Second by Brian.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.